各位委员
议员们今天这个特别会议的目的是听取议员和 individuals 的意见关于《法律 reform commission》的咨询文件中关于强奸和其他不 consent 的 sexual offenses 参加的议员和 individuals 来坐我们已经形成了议程所以我现在叫会议开始我们希望等待更多的议员和 individuals 来坐 议员们，你可以利用这个时间 去读读书记中
都决定了今天我们有二十一个团体
今天我们有二十一个议员和 individuals 参加我们还有 LRC 的代表先生 Stephen Wong 先生 Peter Duncan 先生 Eric Cheung 先生 Andrew Powna 和先生 Thomas Leng 我现在想邀请议员和 individuals 来戴耳机频道零是弗洛尔频道一是中国话频道二英语我想提醒你们其他参会者书面和文字举报现在我想邀请议员和 individuals 来发言因为我相信我们的议员们已经阅读了你们的举报按照我们的实践你可以之后在会议结束后做当你说话时如果没有人评论首先我们叫先生 Leng Cheung 香港妇女中心的 advocacy officer 来发言谢谢女士主席关于香港妇女中心我们有一些关于《强奸和其他不 consent 的 sexual offenses》的咨询文件中的意见我们欢迎这些建议现有的法律中存在漏洞女性遭受困难她们必须在犯罪中造成第二次打击已经过时不再适用法律可以尽快修改以确保受害者得到充分的保护 当然，可以改进 首先，关于第一点 就是 guiding principle 我们认为非常欢迎在1950 年代社会道德和 virginity 的社会道德和 virginity 的社会道德和 virginity 的在过去的经验中性暴力受害者受害者会受到心理压力可能会感到羞耻在1950 年代联合国通过了一个公约所以除了 articles 在基本法和 UN 协会公约中我们认为 article 19 of CEDO 和女性应该给予应有的尊重公约中规定在修改 legislation 的过程中关于第七点以代替现有 penal penetration 由 sexual assault 由 penetration 谢谢 接下来，女士 Hoipui Lam 从“ advancement of feminism”组织中 谢谢女士主席我们有四个提议 首先，我们同意 LRC 性自主性应该是 guiding principle 和已有的 subjective belief 应该被由 subjectivity 加 objectivity 替换如果受害者被困在一个房间里等等 manifest inequality 之间两性别之间所以 intimidation 防胁和暴力所以根据 statutory definition 合法监护和 indirect 或 direct 利用暴力、威胁或 intimidation 应该被考虑 同样的，之前的 speaker 所有形式的 penetration 应该被视为严重的因为性 penetration 和性罪名除了由 penis 拿走在强奸案件中 steel bar 被使用而造成损伤的可能比 penis 拿走更严重性罪名和 assault 最后也应该由 legislation 包括它不应该像 recommendation 20 中那样放松让我举几个例子 嗯，有 SM 群体 例如，可以在 balconies 进行这种活动导致 intimidation 和威胁以及恐怖 接下来，先生 Chan Chong Yau 我的观点很简单至于 term consent 法律 stipulates 被告方所以我希望可以有一个明确的定义关于强奸先生 Chan，你有什么补充吗？ 没有下一个香港中国公民协会社会工作官级部先生 Long Ken Hong 谢谢女士主席谢谢议员们我们是 SWD 社会工作协会最大的成员至于 legislative 提议这次我们基本上同意但我们想提一些额外的问题纯粹地改变 provisions 不能改变 morality 和 lifestyle 在某些群体尤其是在 marginate 年轻人群体中他们的性关系相对放松 minor 性犯罪可能发生所以当我们修改法律时应该有 clear 途径解释这些人什么是犯罪所以在检察院给被告然后关于 registry 的披露需要做些什么
嘘声和脱衣这种性犯罪 versus 骚女人或强奸如果实际有性攻击自然性和性格和 civilism 率度不同如果这些被列为性犯罪之前的《法律 reform commission》也指出 对于 14 岁以下的男孩男性我们不能假设他们无法强奸但是对于 14 岁以下的年轻人们他们不能被判处生命他们不能被关押他们不能被送到 corrections服务 在过去他们只能被送到 juvenile 机构所以如果法律改革了我们需要为此花更多心思谢谢女士 Leng 接下来我们有从 Kwan Fik Kwan Fok 女人的群体女士 Chong Bick Moi 涉及妻子受到家庭暴力导致家庭破裂更多对这个问题更加关注应该有更夫和妻子之间的尊重应该有性 consent 目前看法是你是妻子你应该遵守我的性要求几乎被默认有些丈夫在上班前需要性他们会发表说外面有很多女性所以这些都是威胁很多 elderly 男人他们会服用兴奋剂他们会吃药 他们会说，我为了这个目的娶你 甚至会使用暴力他们会拿刀我们有很多家庭问题婚姻问题这种类型的案子正在上升所以我想应该有更多的教育关于婚姻生活谢谢女士 Chong 接下来我们有“ concerning legal rights of victims of domestic violence” 女士 Puja Kapai
很及时而且很高兴地注意到委员会采取了一种不同的 jurisdictions 的 comparative experience 然而，还有一些问题没有解决 我们只想 highlights 几个以确保 proposed 改善能够适应当地情况咨询文件提出性工作者并不被限制在事件的背景中发生这样的工作不是性犯罪 然而，这一点直接削弱了 在工作过程中这一点与咨询文件中先进的自主性矛盾即使是性工作者性自主性必须得到完全尊重不能被忽视 第二，青少年的位置 随着保护原则年龄是个重要的 consideration 然而，文章也讨论了 性 intercourse 的合法年龄虽然有规定女孩小于 16岁被女孩小于 13岁处以 severe 刑罚但没有 explicitly 显著的与男孩一起进行类似的行径根据平等原则从儿童权利的角度如此平等的保护必须在法律中 expressly制定 而且 clarity 是指导原则我们注意了改革文件中的建议 第三，关于青少年或年轻女孩 处于 13到16 岁之间这个群体的情况是它标志着 inherent contradiction between 自由和保护原则尽管咨询文件强调这些可能是相互同意进行性 intercourse 在这种情况下两者都处于 underage 这些案例通常不会被 prosecution 它忽略了前线现实父母的 underage女孩 可能会坚持 prosecution charges 被男孩起诉年龄是个很重要的因素在自控决策中自控决策非常重要在这方面他们的自控行为应该被尊重我们建议 criminalization 不是答案也许教育或其他措施应该被采用以处理这样的情况 所以，即使这篇文章中 没有详细提到这一点与自由原则矛盾 第四，关于被告是否可以 确定受害者同意我们注意到 prosecution 上被告只是需要合理的相信受害者同意但我们认为测试应该简化在所有情况考虑后确认被告的相信请求受害者同意它的合理性应该包括要求被告证明他或她采取了 reasonable 步伐确认受害者同意否则受害者会暴露这削弱了性自主性在测试她的道德 最后，我们想 highlight 没有讨论年轻儿童在不同的社区在香港可能成为世俗婚姻的对象有很多例子女孩们知道老师常常好奇发生了什么这可能值得思考暑假后结婚这是我们委员会和政府要更小心地考虑这些孩子和他们的权利可以得到全面保护谢谢
好的，非常感谢
接下来我们有“ concerning sexual violence against women” 女士 Linda Wong 我们欢迎《法律 reform commission》的研究 我们同意很多点但我有五个点要 highlight 首先，我们应该 将 penetration 和强奸视为同一个罪名 penetration 应该取代 the term rape《法律 reform commission》在 proposal 7和8中我们认为强奸的范围应该从 penal penetration 到臀部、阴道和嘴巴这是一个很好的变化因为它会包括男性和 transsexual 青年但我们觉得罪名应该结合强奸和 penal penetration 因为它可以打破强奸的 stereotype 它可以让公众理解 penal penetration 或 non-penal penetration 还是一个严重的罪名我们也可以避免 witnesses 给出证据关于 penal penetration 的存在所以我们认为我们同意 penalty 应该和罪名是一样的但是仍然有不同的 sentencing guidelines 因此 witnesses 仍然需要描述 penal penetration 等等所以这只是 witnesses 的负担如果 penalty 是一样的为什么不能结合罪名我们也觉得性暴力是一种暴力它是一种对一个人的性自主性所以如果 penal penetration 和 rape 是相同的那么 penal penetration 可以反映罪行的严重性所以为了减少这种 stigmatization 和 labeling 效果我们认为 penal penetration 应该取代 the term rape 第二个点在《法律 reform commission》的报告中 我们同意他们但同时我们应该我们想问如果有人使用威胁、关押如果有人吸毒和 alcohol 第三个点关于《法律 reform commission》proposal 12 就是 mental state mental element 我们支持《法律 reform commission》改变 objective test 成为 subjective 和 objective test 所以如果这个变化实施它不仅会覆盖 existing loophole 它也会让裁判清楚地理解受害者 intentions 它也会减少这些受害者歧视和 discrimination 我们觉得我们还需要澄清嘘声和脱衣所以我们也同意关于 indecent assault 的定义我们认为在性 assault 如果一个人或无视一个人的 intentions 而产生不安这是对自主性的一种侮辱所以严肃性不应该只是指触碰睾丸所以我们支持这一点但我们希望在第三个定义中那就是应该针对嘘声行为和脱衣我们还看到应该有更多保护受害者隐私我们觉得性历史的描述对受害者来说不够充分受害者不应该进行录音采访我们认为应该被修改谢谢女士 Wong 接下来，女士 Tiffany Ng 从 Rain Lily 我是 Rain Lily Rain Lily 是一个涉及性暴力的机构我们帮助他们的受害者和家庭我们提供 intervention 支持所以关于这个法律改革我们欢迎这个练习我们同意《法律 reform commission》扩展定义的范围就是 penetration 应该包括阴道臀部和嘴巴也有一些受害者告诉我们当她们被侵犯时她们被迫进行性行为甚至比阴道 penetration 更高《法律 reform commission》的咨询文件描述了 penetration 我们欢迎这项 amendments 所以你可以看到最近有一个印度的案子强奸案还有其他物品被使用比如玻璃瓶、梳子写字工具、笔伤害并不低于 penal penetration 但是根据当前法律他们只能被认定为 indecent assault 它并不反映罪名的严重性所以是一个很大的改进但我们并不想做出任何区分因为受害者无论是被 penal 或 non-penal 物件强奸伤害也一样严重她们仍然感到羞耻在 current rape trials 是否被 penal 或 non-penal 物件侵入这在很多情况下就是问题的核心他们被问左边和右边他们是否确定被 penis 侵入事实上受害者很难给出证据被问如何描述她能看到她被 penis 侵入吗还有一个受害者她当时不知道当她被侵犯时所以她无法证明 beyond reasonable 她被 penis 侵入案件不能被 convictions 所以我们同意被 penis 或 non-penal 物件侵入为什么我们需要区分这两个罪名这两个罪名仍然会受到相同的 maximum penalty 它们都是严重的所以我们建议将 penal 和 non-penal 性暴力视为同一个罪名最后我们不想保留 the term rape 因为有 negative labeling 有 stigmatization 而且其他形式的强奸比如 non-penal penetration 所以我们希望《法律 reform commission》可以考虑将 the term rape 由 penal penetration 替换
接下来女士 Ann Lee 我是 Rain Lily 的理事我想在 statutory 定义上发表一下 LRC 提出更改 consent 的定义有两个点自由和自愿协议和 under capacity 至于 free 和 voluntary 协议有 partial comments 和 misunderstandings 我与医生和警察官员相关受害者可能需要斗争并反击以表明不 consent 我也被告诉受害者腹部没有出血这意味着有 consent 所以有不同的理解 So there are different understandings of free and voluntary agreement. According to our working experience, sometimes because of horror and the feeling of being threatened, the victims could not struggle or pose strong reaction. To cite an example, many ladies were subject to indecent assault in MTR carriages. They silently accepted. Does that mean consent? It's because the mentality of the victim very often affects the reaction. So if the definition is only to explain what's incapacity, it's not sufficient. So we propose three additional factors. First of all, the victim cannot signify non-consent under certain circumstances. For example, Ms. Chong mentioned intimidation, and in some cases, there's unlawful custody. And when the victim is helpless by the hillside, is it really true that the victim can express his or her consent? So under certain circumstances, the victim is not in a position to give consent. Secondly, no reaction is not equivalent to consent. As I said, due to the mental state of the victim, the victim may not pose a strong reaction or fight back. So during a trial, if we just rely on the reaction of the victim and do not consider all these circumstances in deciding whether there's consent, is unfair to the victim. So we should make reference to Australia. That is, on top of the statutory definition, there should be an addition that we cannot use silence, non-reaction, no violent fight back, no wound, and past sexual behaviour with the accused as being consent. Then during a court trial, the victim's will will be much clearer. Thirdly, in the existing law, rape is an offence if there is no consent or no express consent. Now, the ORC is only proposing a mandatory act forced upon the victim. So the accused may use, make use of another excuse to get off the hook. So we should model on the New Zealand practice. That is, disregard to the victim's willingness should also be considered to respect sexual autonomy. Thank you. Next, Ms. Candice Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mainly work for ethnic minorities and foreign domestic helpers. I welcome the previous comments. First of all, to replace rape by sexual assault by penetration, rape should no longer be retained. Many domestic helpers told us that rape is too bad for their reputation. So sexual assault by penetration should replace rape, and then we should enhance protection for witnesses. We had a recent case in India. But apart from India, in China, and many other jurisdictions, foreign domestic helpers told us that secret photography has been very serious and frequent in Amish toilets, rooms, et cetera. Employers have been doing secret photography of the foreign domestic helpers so that they are living under threat and terror. Under the law, FDHs have to live in the employer's residences. So even when an FDH is not working, he cannot escape or she cannot escape a peeping and secret photographer. And that's an insult and sexual offence. But at present, such acts are not covered by the law. Even with secret photography, an FDH can only seek civil damage or seek counselling. So we should cover such behaviour as sexual acts that will more protect the FDHs inhering their grievances. And then when FDHs go to court, they encounter a lot of difficulties. After they're sexually assaulted, they're under a lot of pressure. And then with cultural difference, language difference, and difficulties in interpretation, witnesses' testimonies might be affected. And FDHs very often have to go to the court again to bear testimony, adding to their pressure. And sometimes there's racial discrimination. For example, people may think that FDHs come to Hong Kong to earn money so they willingly have sexual behaviour with employers. Then in seeking justice, these FDHs are more marginalized and they encounter more difficulties. So we should add protection to witnesses. We should reduce the need for them to testify again and again. Testimony by videotaping will provide a safe environment for FDHs to testify and to enhance their willingness to testify. That will enhance the accuracy of the statements, and the whole proceeding will be even smoother. So we should enhance protection for witnesses. That's their right. Thank you. Next, Ms. Mu Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, members. We agree that rape should be combined with sexual assault by penetration. And rape should actually be replaced by sexual assault by penetration. Our judicial system is not protecting victims sufficiently. Only those under the age of fourteen and those incapacitated and with mental illnesses are allowed to testify by videotaping or under screening. Other witnesses will have to use other reasons to apply for special handling, but very often their applications fail. After being physically and mentally hurt, victims have to be very bold to testify against the accused. So if the victim has to repeat her plight or his plight in court, it's a second blow to them. And the very curious audience in the public gallery may be watching the victim with curiosity and interest. And the victim has to face the judge, the lawyers, or even jurors. All these have added pressure to the victim apart from insult and mental stress. And then in court, the victim has to repeat the experience. That means they are being assaulted once again nakedly. How many victims can, under insufficient protection from the court, once again testify against the accused? As a result, they may give up their right or opportunity to testify. Our judicial system should protect the victims. But there's insufficient protection in our judicial system for the victims. For Tycoon X, he could testify behind the screen. Mrs. A B and C can testify behind the screen, but a normal adult cannot testify behind the screen. So we hope that during a court trial for sexual offences, there should be videotaped testimonies, and witnesses should be allowed to testify behind the screen. Thank you. Next, Ms. Doris Chong from Voices. Good afternoon. I represent Voices. Our concern group is formed by those who have survived as well as volunteers. We would like to uphold our rights. We are very pleased to see the proposed amendments by the ORC, but they're insufficient. In particular, nothing is mentioned about protection of victims. Just now, Ms. Wong said that in court, victims face huge pressure and difficulties. In 2012, when we applied for testimony behind the screen, we failed in all cases. In one of the cases, the victim was under great pressure before going to court. She committed suicide and was hospitalized. We obtained medical reports, but even with medical reports, the judge did not approve testimony behind the screen, and the victim could not testify eventually, and the suspect was eventually acquitted. At present, there are guidelines that victims can try to apply for testifying behind the screen, but it's very difficult to get approval. So we would like to incorporate this into the legislative amendments. As for protection of privacy of the victim, there are provisions to the effect that personal particulars of victims, including names, should not be disclosed. But in reality, when a victim appears in court, many defence lawyers deliberately mention nicknames or English names, and even addresses and telephone numbers were disclosed. So after the trial, the victims were under huge mental pressure. And in some cases, anonymous telephone calls were received by the victims. So we hope that when the law is amended, parties involved should be prohibited from disclosing the particulars of the victims, including names and addresses and telephone numbers. Another aspect is sexual experience. Questions related to sexual experience related to a particular case, the defence lawyer or counsel can put, can ask questions about that during interrogation. Very often, when the defence lawyer wants to insult the victim or create bad impressions about the victim, sexual experience of the victim was disclosed. So the statutory provisions were actually not enforced. So other sexual experience, other than that with the defendant, should be subject to restriction, and questions should not be asked casually and randomly about that. Next, we have Ms. Wendy Tong from Women Friendly Environment Group.
Yes, thank you. First of all, our group agrees that rape should be combined with sexual assault by penetration, and the latter should actually replace rape. Our group also welcomes that secret photography should also be covered, and that should also be considered as an offence so that members of the public know that secret photo-taking is an infringement upon the privacy of another person. And that should be extended to the private sector. As science and technology advance, secret photography has become more common.
Last year, we did a survey of MTR incidents. We had interviewed victims and witnesses, and the survey found that whether witnesses or the victims, when they are taking pictures, they don't know how to react. And this, they also are unaware of remedial actions and support groups. We currently don't have legislation to deal with taking pictures of the skirt. We only have charges such as wandering or dishonesty in use of a computer. And the penalties are very light. It does not achieve a deterrent effect, and it cannot demonstrate to the public the serious offence of taking pictures up skirts. So the Reform Commission has tried to deal with taking pictures of the skirt, but it's still ambiguous. We have to rely on the victim's subjective feelings, but we cannot demonstrate to the public the seriousness of this offence. We should take some reference from Canada and New Zealand, where they have some legislation that we could make reference to. For example, peeping tom offences, taking pictures in washrooms, changing room facilities and so on. We, so peeping tom activities, even though it might not create actual fear or harm to the victim, but they have in fact already infringed upon the victim's rights, and they should therefore be prosecuted. Lastly, we hope that the Reform Commission can take our proposals seriously and combine the charges of rape and penal penetration and respect, our individual sexual autonomy should be respected. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tong. Next, we have Ms. Elaine Lam. I'm happy to see so many legislators present because on the last occasion, there were only a few legislators. Such an important legislative change had only drawn such a very minimal traction. But I think we're all shocked by the recent Indian rape incident. And people will say that Hong Kong is much better, that Hong Kong is not like that. But why are we different? It's because we don't see it. But if you look at the hotline reports, there were some 4,000 complaints, and less than 5% reported to the police. And according to the 98th Census statistics, there was not one case where legal help was sought. So the Law Reform Commission wants to change the legislation. We feel it's very timely because the current legislation is very problematic. A lot of people do not report these crimes. We see that there are a lot of good proposals, for example, sexual autonomy. A lot of ambiguous terms in common law are now clearly defined. So it enhances our comprehension of the legislation. So then we need to ask, well, we now have new legislation. But as a matter of fact, the Law Reform Commission, does that provide sufficient safeguards? Well, we heard from the different groups just now, such as the term, the definition of rape should include penal penetration. We need to change the name. This is an important message to society, that we do not allow these types of activities. We also need to change our attitudes. Whether there's penal or non-penal penetration, the harm is just as great. Another aspect is the witnesses cannot describe penal penetration, and therefore there is no conviction. So it's because the judges don't give clear direction to the jury. The jury, the case has to be retried, the witness has to repeat their evidence again, and there's a lack of protection as described by other speakers. So a lot of times, the charges might even be changed to just indecent assault. So we think the definition of penal penetration would cover these legal difficulties. Another issue is consent. We had some cases where we have strangers approaching the victim or where violence was used to subdue the victim. And we find that the police will charge them, will charge the defendant with assault, but not sexual assault. So when you read newspapers, sometimes the victim's name is even disclosed. So the public, they see that the victim's names are frequently reported. So will victims report the crime to the police? So we feel the reform on this occasion might lead to a lot of concerns. Will we affect the defendant's rights? So we understand the concern. So we did a lot of research. So we would like the Law Reform Commission to consider the examples in Canada and Australia. They were also able to balance the defendant's rights and at the same time safeguard the victim. So we won't have more invisible crimes because they dare not come forward to charge the defendant. This violence is actually very terrifying, and I hope that you attach sufficient importance to it. Next, we have Next, we have Mr. Andrew Bruce from Hong Kong Bar Association.
Inviting the bar association. This reform is much overdue. The principles on which it is based, the six principles, I think will attract a great deal of approval. But let us not forget in those principles that under the basic law in particular, the right to fair trial and the right to equality under the law must never be overlooked. Against that background, we think that there is much in these proposals which will commend great support and rightly so. There are issues that I think need to be thought about very carefully before we go forward on these. The issue of unreasonable belief is often raised. As a prosecutor and defence counsel of 30 years in Hong Kong, I can tell you juries do, every day that they try these cases, deal with whether a belief is reasonable. It's just in the DNA of juries. And whether we need to change this and possibly bring in unforeseen consequences, I wonder. I think you'll find that the new offence of sexual assault by penetration is a wonderful attainment of these six principles. I think we have a lot to do and I think we barristers could probably contribute a lot to this to improve the procedural protections for all concerned in sexual offences, particularly, I would guess, victims. There's much to do and many of those problems have been highlighted this afternoon. And I think that there's a very good argument for making sure that that is part of the package that goes forward if we are going to change these laws. I can reassure some of the commentators that there are offences which do govern under skirt photography in Hong Kong. They are not very good. They are archaic. They are limited and much can be done to improve them. But at least there is some coverage. But as I say, much needs to be done to improve that. I think many of the points that have been covered already don't need me to go over them and I thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Bruce. Next, we have Caritas Project for Adult Survivors of Childhood Trauma, Ms. Hoi Yim Phan. We are a support group for adult survivors of childhood trauma. And we want to help these trauma victims overcome their psychological or their trauma. They might have been victims to violence. They might have been witness to violence and so on. So regarding the Law Reform Commission's proposal, we agree with the majority of them and we just have two points that we'd like to add. For example, proposal for sexual behaviour and consent, the right, the ability to provide consent to sexual behaviour. Well, we find that for adult survivors of childhood trauma, even though this happened before the years of 18, they might be in their eight, they might be in their 30s or 40s, but this trauma might leave them with very distorted views of sex and they are on a lot of occasions unable to give consent to sex. For example, we had a male survivor. They had been violated by his friends and because of his physiological responses, he felt that he was, he had consented to that and he couldn't understand that there was some confusion and fear in that incident. So these complex psychological states, if they are not given the proper psychological treatment and even though they have grown up, when they come across sexual assault scenarios, they might not be able to provide a reasonable consent and make the appropriate decision. Another example was that we have female survivors. In their childhood, they might have been sexually assaulted by their fathers. And when their fathers assaulted them, it might draw more, it would attract more parental attention. They might be confused to believing that was a form of affection and they had mixed emotions of fear and these repressed feelings. Even though these victims are now adults and when they come across sexual assault scenarios, they might have distorted feelings. They might feel that these were just expressions of attraction and therefore they could not respond appropriately and reasonably. We also have a lot of literature indicating that childhood sexual assault or domestic violence has influence on brain function. That there is impairment to brain, permanent impairment to brain function. These will affect them emotionally. They will have fear, anxiety. It affects their emotional states and they might not be able to understand what appropriate sexual behaviour is and might not be able to make appropriate decisions. So we hope that in the ability to consent to sex, we should pay more attention to this definition. Second, regarding proposal 17 on touching, the definition of touching, we feel, can be more accurate. We can, there should be further classification whether they were touching by genitals or touching without genitals. The reason for this proposal is that in our past experience, we see that sexual assault with, through touching by genitals, this has larger emotional and psychological impact than touching by other organs. Okay, next, we have Ms. Gloria Ng. I'm happy to have this opportunity today. Referring to the Law Reform Commission report, there are very good improvements, but I feel there's an area where they could have done better. They had taken reference from the English law and they've pointed out there's an evidential presumption, which is not working very well in England. And they do not propose to include presumption. But I feel if this presumption were included, it could strengthen a safeguard for victims. In fact, evidential presumption, if you look at the English law, it includes a victim if they were threatened under violence or if there was violence started to a third person or if they were illegally imprisoned or because of physical disability, they couldn't express themselves clearly or if they were not conscious and agreed to sex. It does not, it is not, it should not be construed as consent. Well, under normal circumstances, anybody would agree that is not consent to sex. It was just that the circumstances led to consent to sex. So if the new legislation can include presumption, then there are more safeguards to victims and the law itself should be attempting to seek out the truth, not whether the victim had verbal consent or the actual consent.
In fact, to add in that presumption will reduce the burden on the victim without sacrificing much right of the accused. I also agree to the foregoing deputations and individuals that we should add protection to the victim in court. The victim is under huge pressure to testify in court. And as such huge pressure, it may not be conducive to the victim to testify. And the victim may not be able to clearly recap the whole incident. So I agree that there should be enhanced protection in court for the victim. Thank you, Ms. Ng. I'd like to remind participants that they should use entirely Chinese or English in their remarks. Next, Mr. Daniel Yip.
Like those before me, I would like to agree that the term rape should be abandoned in the new legislation and that instead the term sexual assault with penetration should be used. Firstly, this is because using the term rape perpetuates the false myth that rape is the more or only traumatic act of sexual violence. The report says that rape has never been understood to include non-penal penetration and that the general public has preconceptions of this meaning so that it is undesirable to extend the definition of rape beyond its present meaning. However, the report also acknowledges that the impact of some non-penal penetrative assaults are considered as serious as rape. This is the rationale for the new suggested offence of sexual assault by penetration. So what is happening is you're suggesting that not using the term rape will degrade its seriousness. What is effectively saying is that the public does not take something as seriously when it is not called rape. And the effect is that you are falsely elevating rape above other kinds of sexual assault by penetration. This has extremely harmful effects. Rape crisis centre work around the world has seen that this minimizes perpetrators' actions and survivors' reactions to sexualised violence. It very well may be that the public has a preconception of this meaning, but it perpetuates a false myth. A misconception, no matter how well-known, is still false. Using the term sexual assault with penetration to cover all acts of sexual assault involving penetration would properly reflect the nature of these acts and the seriousness of both penal and non-penal penetration. It's not so much that you're downgrading the seriousness of the offence of penal penetration, but you're fully recognising the seriousness of non-penal penetration. Secondly, using this term will assist with clarity of the law. Rape crisis centres around the world will tell you that many resources are devoted to answering the question, was I raped? Often, victims are not sure whether what has happened to them actually constitutes rape. This should not happen. Victims should not have to wonder whether they have crossed this magical threshold of constituting this serious offence of rape if something has happened of a sexual assault of nature. This needs to be taken seriously. And the term sexual assault with penetration is a merely descriptive term. When you add this qualifier with penetration, it is hard to believe that the general public, including complainants, perpetrators and juries do not understand what it entails or its seriousness. Thirdly, using this term will assist with reporting of and ultimately enforcement against such offences. When you have such, when you have such a lack of clarity of this offence, victims who have been affected by non-penal penetration often believe that what has happened to them is not serious enough to report. And so eliminating the term rape would eliminate this false myth. In Canada, in 1983, they engaged in a full-scale reform of their legislation, including the termination of the term rape. And what has been seen is that there has been a significant increase in numbers of reports of sexual assault since 1983. And the research that has been done since has found it hard not to conclude that the terminology has not contributed to that.
Thank you, Mr. Yip. Next, Mr. John Fu. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Today, we're trying to strive for the statutory rights of the victims of sexual offences. First of all, such victims should have the right to choose to testify behind the screen. Secondly, they should also have the right to testify by videotaping. At present, normally, a witness can apply for testifying behind the screen and testifying by videotaping. But then victims of sexual offences are not classified as another category of victims. That is to disregard the differences between these two categories of victims. In other jurisdictions, such differences are already recognised, but not in Hong Kong. What are the differences? There are two points. First of all, victims of sexual offences may be offering sensitive testimony. The standard of proof is beyond all doubts. And then the victim may have to disclose in court how her vagina had been penetrated by the penis of the accused. So the victim is under huge pressure. Secondly, the element of consent is very important. So the strategy of the defence will very often be that the victim is telling a lie that she did not give consent. That may cause insult on the victim and adding pressure to the victim. And then the decision is left to the judicial officers. But we discover the judicial officers have not been sensitive enough in this regard. Even for all applicants, for all adult applicants, application for testimony behind the screen or testimony by videotaping were rejected. This affects the rights of victims of sexual offences as well as the, and the operation of the whole judicial system is affected. When applicants fail in their application, they face pressure in testifying in court. So the nature of the testimony is affected and the victim may have to be re-hospitalised. As a result, the victim may not be able to appear in court. So this is a huge problem. And now we are facing challenges from this convention of the common law to protect the accused. Now, this has been in place for decades. In Australia, in many of their states, like in Victoria State, their sexual offence victims can choose to testify behind the screen. And even in the UK, more relaxed arrangements are available to protect victims in court. Thank you, Mr. Fu. Today, 19 deputations or individuals have expressed their views. Two deputations have signed in but have not shown up. Now, I'd like to give the floor to the representatives of the LLC to address members' questions last time and the remarks expressed today. Who will speak first? Yes, Mr. Peter Duncan.
Madam Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank all the contributors to this consultation paper. As you can see, a lot of work has gone into this and you've provided even more work for us in the future. We've found the proposals extremely constructive. There's, I think, until the end of February before the consultation period expires. So if there's any more views that people wish to express, they can do so between now and the end of February. After that time, the subcommittee will consider all these representations and then make another, draw up another paper for the consideration of the Law Reform Commission itself. The views which have been expressed today and in paper on previous occasions, I can assure you, will be fully taken into account. It's not obviously appropriate or possible for me or practical to respond to all of the points which have been made during the course of this meeting. But perhaps I could just address a few points which have been made by a number of the contributors. First of all, I think the loudest message that we received this afternoon is with respect to the proposals in the paper at the present time with regard to rape. There's a clear sentiment from a number of you that the rape itself carries a certain stigma, which is not conducive to the protection of people who are the subject of sexual assaults. And there's certainly a preference from the people we've heard from today that rape not continue on the statute books and that instead all forms of penetration should be constituted as a sexual offence. I think we've got that message loud and clear and I'm sure that the members will consider that very, very closely. A second matter which has been referred to by a number of you is the question of the mental element in a sex offence. This is not an easy subject, subject of the objective mix. Your views that have been expressed this afternoon and in the papers again will be very helpful to our considerations. Third point, the peeping tom situation. Obviously, we hear a sentiment that the contributors wish something to be done about that. And certainly, the subcommittee shares that view. The question is exactly what sort of legislation should be introduced? At the moment, it is in the form of a sexual assault. Some people have suggested that we should go further than that and have a particular offence outside sexual offence and that we should be considering the legislation in Canada. Canada and New Zealand. We have already given some consideration to that. The legislation in those countries is more aimed at privacy considerations and what might perhaps go on in the privacy of the bathroom or a shower. That doesn't necessarily cope with the classic Hong Kong case of photography on the MTR and the like. Nevertheless, the sentiments which have been expressed will be certainly taken into account. Another matter, I think, which a number of you seized upon was the issue of consent. What needs to be established to establish lack of consent? At the moment, there is no statutory definition with regard to consent. The paper suggests one, as free and voluntary agreement. Whether that's the most appropriate one, we'll consider again in the light of the submissions which have been made. The final point, which I've noted, which was the subject of a number of the contributors, was the question of protection to witnesses. Again, that's a message which is loud and clear. This part of our deliberations has not concerned itself at all with protection of witnesses. It's just not in the terms of reference with respect to our considerations. But we're now proceeding on a different stage of examination of this whole topic and the question of protection to witnesses will be considered in that context. As one of the submitters made the point, this has to be considered, of course, in the context of the right to defendant to a fair trial, the right to equality and those sorts of things. So it's not a topic that can be dealt with on its own. Other considerations have to be taken into account. But I'm sure, I can assure you that the subcommittee will consider those matters. Madam Chair, that's already, I wish to react. Perhaps give Mr. Professor Chung and Mr. Pang the opportunity to react with any sentiments they have as well.
Mr. Chung, I also very much agree with the chairman of the subcommittee. We're in the stage of consultation, so we'd like to listen to more views before preparing our final report. Perhaps I should explain one aspect, and that's also mentioned in our consultation document. The review is phased. So this consultation document is mainly on sex offences committed without consent. Just now, some speakers said that young boys were not protected enough and not enough protection had been offered to young lovers. Now, in our next consultation document, we'll touch more upon consent. Should the consent of age be kept at sixteen years old? And apart from protecting underage girls, should we also protect underage boys? In the next stage, our consultation document will discuss more the protective principle. Besides, I'd like to supplement on the protection for victims. As we mentioned just now, this is not considered in this consultation document, but that does not mean that we're not going to look into that because our review is phased. So we'll consider that in the next stage. I also heard supporting views for replacing rape by sexual assault by penetration. Indeed, we keep an open mind. My personal opinion is that this is not related to the fundamental principles. It is only related to whether or not we should keep the offence of rape.
When we conducted our study, we looked at the literature and we found that some victims felt that if you don't retain the charge of rape, it's not fair to them because they had been raped and now you're saying that it's not a rape, they were violated by penal penetration, and they would feel that their safeguards are insufficient. Just now, I heard about labelling, stigma. Well, there's one thing I would consider that being, the current legislation wants to protect some victims and their names cannot be disclosed. So if our law is enforced, the media should not report their names, but the rapist has no safeguard, his name can be disclosed. So the labelling, whether we should retain the charge, is that in the best interests of the victim? Well, I don't have any inclination. As a scholar, I live in Ivory Tower, so I'm open to your views. So whether we retain the charge or not retain the charge, the name, that is, we still want to safeguard the victim. And in this regard, I would like to hear your views.
Gentlemen, for your excellent submissions today, these are very important matters that we shall be taking back to the commission. Peter has already dealt with, I think, five points that came across from many delegates today, replacing rape with sexual assault by penetration and the terminology point particularly dealt with by the last candidate and whether this actually is correct under the circumstances or is it a misconception. We've got the mental element of the offence, the underskirt photography and the consent, all very important issues, and these we shall be dealing with very seriously when we get back.
And it's now time for legislators to ask questions.
And they will have four minutes for questions and answers. We have Li Chuyan, Liu Weiheng, Guo Jiaqi, Wang Bichuan, He Shoulan, Claudia Mo,郭佩凡 and Chen Gao. Mr. Li Chuyan. Thank you, Chairman. A lot of deputations have welcomed the Law Reform Commission's work, but I'm concerned that we provide views today, the LRC will draft a report, but whether the government will take up these proposals is something else. I'm concerned that we have, we all want reform and change, but when it goes to the stage of LRC and then the government, when it tables a bill, we don't see any change. So we're not here to ask the LRC's stance, but all I want to say is that when the LRC concludes its work, that we can really see some change. Recently, you see the gang rape in India, a spiritual leader had said that the victim did not plead, I don't know what term he used. Well, if we have these kinds of spiritual leaders, then we're in a very poor state of affairs, indeed. Now, today, John Tatming had said the negative labelling of a rapist, well, I think we really need more discussion. This is negative labelling. It's, this is a good thing for the rapists when they have a negative labelling. But I'm concerned, the combination of the charges, one rationale was, and I want to ask, if there are two charges, if they are separate, they're not combined, one rape, one penal penetration, what if there was a wrong charge? Let's say you chose rape, but it was actually penal penetration, then there's a matter of drawing evidence. So I heard that this is very, it's very difficult for witnesses to give evidence and you cannot have two trials on the same charge. So the LRC cannot suggest A or B, either one, in either charge being laid upon the defendant. So we can't have the same case and charge the defendant with the two charges. So I would like to hear the LRC's views on this issue. If we, what if we don't combine the charges, will we have a, would that lead to a wrong prosecution? And the second thing on consent, I think we need to be very careful. There are a lot of scenarios where it might not be fair to the victim. I heard some deputations say that in Australia, they seem to have more comprehensive protection for victims regarding consent.
On your first point, Mr. Lee, we've made actual reference, I think it's in recommendation sixteen, whereby there can't be charges in the alternative to take care of the situation that you're concerned about. So from a technical perspective, I don't think there is a problem. Secondly, with the issue of consent, I think various states in Australia have various provisions and we've looked at all of those and we've come up with what we think at the moment is the best of the options, but we'll look at that again.
Let me try to supplement Mr. Lee's question in Chinese.
In actual operation, penal penetration will be an alternate charge. That is, if there's a charge of rape, but if evidence indicates that there might be some doubt whether it was a penis involved, then the court can charge the defendant with a penal penetration. That's an operation, it's an alternate charge. It's the same charge, but if the evidence leads a certain way, then there is an alternate charge that can be applied. And there's also a suggestion that when evidence is collected, the prosecution feels that there's some doubt whether there was a penis involved. So in the beginning, they will charge with penal penetration because in our proposal, penal penetration, the charged penal penetration can include the penis. So that will deal with your concern of letting the defendant off the hook. I need to exercise tighter time control. If there are too many questions, you can respond in one go. Ms. Emily Lau. Thank you, Chairman. We have to thank the deputations and the LRC members. The views are quite uniform, Chairman, but the LRC member said that some people might disagree with dropping the charge of rape. So, well, please clarify that. You hear consensus here and then you said there's disagreement on the other hand. In fact, Chairman, in the government bookshelves, we have too many LRC reports and the majority of them are not implemented. But this is just phase one, they have volumes two and three, so this is very troublesome. You need to step up your efforts. But everyone is in agreement, but there's no action taken. But if they're saying they want to change the rape charge and then some people disagree, well, then please listen to all the views and come to a consensus. Chairman, we've heard issues about witness protection, victim protection, there's insufficient protection right now. When they go to courts, they have to describe their ordeal, they have to be humiliated. Once more, they suffer a nervous breakdown and so on. They know it's going to take time. So they're saying, is there any method to change the current guidelines such that they can afford more protection? We do have applications, they say that they've been turned down. A lot of people don't want to give evidence. So I'd like to, I would like to hear from Mr. Andrew Bruce, there needs to be a fair trial, we agree with that. So under current circumstances, the victims, it's very hard to seek protection, they are under tremendous pressure. So if they can afford change in ten years, you should thank the gods. So is there anything you can do in the meantime to protect the witnesses? The question was directed at you.
It would be crazy, as far as I can see, to have 2013 sexual offences legislation supported by 1960s criminal procedure. I think there's a lot of things we can do. We have to be careful to balance rights here, but the situation is that many, many victims can be dealt with by way of videotaping and the closed-circuit TV arrangements. Not all, not perfect, we can do better. And many of these reforms would be quite modest and yet quite effective. But I always say, be careful you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater as far as these sort of things are concerned. So we have to be a little bit careful, but there are a multitude of things we can do better. I don't speak for the judiciary, please don't think that I do, but it seems blindingly obvious to me we can do much better than we can.
That's us, the government officials, what can be done.
We are a recommending body. We can't make legislation, we can't change the law. We can make recommendations to the administration and then it's a question of how the administration reacts to those recommendations.
Yes, you can respond in one go for similar questions. Mr. Guo Jiaqi. Chairman, I have to thank the nineteen deputations. On one hand, the chairman of the LRC says that at this stage, you've heard views, you would summarise these views. You have not mentioned young boys and girls, consensual sex or being violated. I think that's because there's a contrast between the legislation and actual situation. In sexual assault, there's no difference between young boys or girls. But at this stage, you have not touched upon this and I express regret at this and you should follow up on this as soon as possible. The second point, the document has not dealt with this, but they mentioned witness protection. Some deputations had said that only five percent of victims could reach a successful prosecution. This is shocking, it's shameful. Are we more like India than a developed country where there's only five percent of victims who are willing to appear in court? I think this judicial system is, does not afford sufficient witness protection or victim protection. I see Mr. Wong Kai-yi here, the DOJ is not present. So even when we conclude this hearing, we heard the chairman of the LRC saying that he has no way to ask the government to accelerate its work, he can only make recommendations. But we see the LRC is just writing reports.
So although the LRC had completed a number of reports, without the administration's action, nothing came forth. And many LRC documents were just stored in the cabinets. So please do not drag this on. I hope that next time we can have the DOJ here. We would like to know the legislative timetable. And I'd like to ask the chairman of the subcommittee to tell us when we'll have the second phase and by when will you be able to collect and analyse all the views and prepare your final report? And when will we have legislative amendments? Ten years? I don't want that. I hope that latest, by the second year, we'll have legislative... by the second year, we'll have legislative amendments.
Mentioned a few moments ago, the consultation period expires in February. And then we will take all those views into account. And then we'll issue our final recommendations to the Law Reform Commission. We are a subcommittee of the Law Reform Commission. As to what happens after that, I cannot help you. I'm only on the
I totally agree with you. That's why we need to ask the Secretary of Justice.
Well, I can't respond any further than that. With regard to vulnerable witnesses and protection to witnesses, I think I've already responded on that question. We haven't come to that yet in our reports, in our recommendations, we haven't considered the matter. I am also concerned about some of the feedback we've heard today. And when we do come to consider that matter, those matters will be taken into account. As regards the protection to young boys as opposed to young girls, I'll ask Professor Cheng Tat-ming to respond to that.
In our report, we do say that the consultation exercise is phased. Why? Because if we are to consult on a whole series of issues, then a lot of views will be received. And even now, with just one topic, we already have a very heavy burden. So we hope that in this consultation exercise, we'll focus on this particular issue. And next time, we can focus on youngsters, the mental handicaps, et cetera. So I hope that Dr. Qu will understand that there is a merit in keeping to one subject in one consultation exercise, which should be more focused. Mr. Stephen Wong?
Well, let me respond to that question. I can supplement. Recently, on the implementation of the LRC recommendations, the LRC did discuss how improvements can be made. The Chief Justice, the DOJ have asked the Secretariat of the LRC such that implementation can take place sooner. The Legco had come up with two recommendations which are being implemented by the government. Number one, within six months of the publication of the recommendations of the LRC, the relevant bureau should signify what should be done. And in six months' time, a clear timetable should be formulated on how to implement the recommendations. Number two, in this panel recently, when Dr. Margaret Ng was the Chairman, the panel recommended to the House Committee, which also endorsed the recommendation that every year the DOJ should report to this panel the latest progress of the implementation of LRC recommendations. I understand that the first time for that report is yet to come, but I understand the DOJ will report to this panel. Next, Ms. Helena Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm not a member of this panel, so I'd like to thank you for giving me the floor. First of all, I'd like to thank the deputations for expressing their views today. I'd also like to thank the LRC for publishing this detailed consultation document. The existing laws about rape and sexual offences were actually enacted in the nineteen fifties. So they're already outdated. It's already late to propose amendments, but still, it's better late than never. At present, our laws still reflect a male-centered society. That's why we have this focus on penal penetration. Witness protection is seriously inadequate either. So for a very, very long time, victims of sexual offences seldom reported their cases to the police. Besides, our laws are too lenient and relaxed towards the suspects of sexual offences. So we should make improvement in all these respects as soon as possible. So I support the recommendations of the LRC. And the guiding principles are good. Sexual autonomy, protective principle, and a combination of the tests of subjectivity and objectivity, et cetera. I'd like to comment on the definition of consent to sexual acts. The deputations today raised one concern. The proposed definition is free and voluntary agreement and capacity to commit the offence. This seems to be against the first guiding principle. That is, the law must be clear and exact. The deputations today would like to further clarify the term consent and make it clearer and more exact. On page forty-two of the Chinese version of the consultation document, the the situation in Scotland is mentioned. From A to F, you mention what's meant by free and voluntary agreement or non-free and involuntary agreement. And you mention the influence of alcohol. So I hope that in future, there shouldn't be any difficulty in convicting the defendant. And today, most deputations commented on recommendations seven and eight. I agree with the LRC that we should define clearly sexual act. So all sexual assault by penetration into the vagina, anus, or mouth should be considered an offence so long as there is no consent. And today, there is the debate on whether or not penal and non-penal penetration should be differentiated. I agree with some of the deputations that the offence should not be too penis-focused. That is, so long as the victim does not consent to the sexual act, then whether or not it is penal or non-penal penetration, it should be considered an offence. Mr. Tso, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the LRC for this report. For this gender-neutral report. Chairman, this indicates the openness of our society. We should not discriminate against those with a different sex inclination. But as the subcommittee chairman said, whether or not the government will immediately proceed to legislative amendments falls outside the purview of the LRC. That's rather unfortunate. The LRC can fine-tune this report, of course, but something can be done immediately. For example, witness protection in court. Witness status and identity should not be disclosed. Now, we have the representative of the bar here. Can the professional bodies formulate their own codes of practice? No matter which side you are representing, you should not deliberately or unintentionally disclose the identity of the victim. And if that happens, a complaint can be lodged with the professional body. I believe the professional bodies can proactively react to society's views. Then we don't need to wait for the long consultation exercise conducted by the LRC and the delayed implementation by the administration. Videotaping and testimony behind the screen should be considered. In fact, these are possible even now. But why is it that so many applications have been rejected? Well, of course, this is not the responsibility of the LRC. But can we be given more background information so that we can ask the relevant bodies to follow up immediately?
Regard to Mr. Bruce, actually.
Yes.
Although you were looking at me.
Professional self-discipline.
It's pretty basic stuff. There is nothing explicit at the moment. But disobeying court orders is pretty serious territory. And whether you need an explicit one for revealing names of victims or alleged victims of sexual assault seems to me to be something that is perhaps not necessary as such. But if I disobey a court order, I don't think even professional discipline is relevant. The court can deal with me and I would be in flagrant contempt of the court and would be punished.
Chairman, professionalism includes self-discipline. Yes, judges can restrict the questioning by lawyers. But the legal profession is a respected profession in society. In protecting witnesses and the disadvantaged, I believe the profession can exercise self-discipline. So I really want the professional bodies to consider my suggestion and respond as soon as possible. Yes, I will also bring the spirit of self-discipline back to my profession. Next, Ms. Claudia Moe.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. Ask the questions quickly and leave more time for answering. First of all, the law society is of the view that oral sex by force should not be considered as rape. What about the bar? Do you have any views in law? Secondly, a question for the LRC. I understand that not all your recommendations were implemented by the administration. I think six to nine years ago, the LRC proposed to criminalize under-the-skirt photography and the media strongly opposed that. And of course, that was dropped. And now you propose to include under-the-skirt photography under the definition of sexual assault. I agree that the scope had been narrowed from normal criminalization to sexual assault. And what about stalking? Can you also include stalking under sexual assault in your recommendations? Because stalking really affect ladies.
Kind of assault that you refer to would be a serious indecent assault. And I would virtually guarantee that if somebody was convicted of that, they would be sentenced in the upper reaches of the existing penalty. However, it is not the same, and I think this is your point. It's not the same penalty as for rape. And the argument would seem to me for law reform to make that kind of penetration potentially as bad as what we now call rape.
That's fine. Obviously, you wouldn't want to answer my question. Okay, the Law Reform Commission.
I'll ask Professor Cheng to respond to that question.
Regarding our views in the report, that is, whether we can extend stalking. No, I want to narrow it down. Just related to sexual assault, stalking and sexual assault. Well, my views are stalking and the review of sexual offences, they are two separate parts of legislation. So I would have reservations on whether we should equate stalking and sexual offences. It would complicate and it would bring about more objections. But bluntly speaking, our ambit within the subcommittee, we can only look at sexual offences. That was our ambit, terms of reference, and I cannot go beyond that and look into privacy issues, stalking. Sometimes it's not related to sexual offences. I think you are referring to the Baptist University report. It's because that was dealing with privacy issues. So it's a wider scope. And it is not something as a subcommittee member on non-consexual sexual offences, I cannot respond to that. These are separate offences. Let's focus on the Law Reform Report, Mr. Kokpui Fan, Ms. Kokpui Fan. The DAB welcomes the LRC consultation paper. It's late, but better than not arriving at all. We have to thank the deputations and individuals. So I hope that the LRC have heard these views. I understand that a long consultation paper will give rise to a lot of problems. But the deputations had talked about protection for young boys, for the mentally handicapped. This had not been mentioned by the consultation paper and therefore will give the public the impression that you're not going to look into these matters. But after hearing from deputations and your response, I hope that in your second consultation paper, you can have a more detailed response. Just now, a lot of deputations raised the issue and they were not responded to. And for example, protection for sex workers, for domestic helpers, victims of domestic violence, protection, and whether there should be further amendments to the law in these areas. And whether we need more proposals. I'd like to hear from you. And just now, our legislators also asked, from now to actual reform, it's a lengthy process. So we hope to see some immediate measures to protect victims' privacy, especially when they give evidence in courts, the pressure they are faced with, even though you can't disclose their names, but in fact, their names are frequently disclosed. So how can they be prevented from further harm? How can they give evidence in greater security without fear of humiliation? I think that's something that could be done right now and I would like to hear your response. LRC?
In this consultation period, let's listen to the views which have been expressed by the delegates. Listen to the views that you have expressed, take them back and discuss them in committee. And what is practical to achieve, we will achieve.
Just now, some deputations also mentioned minorities living in Hong Kong, young girls might have been assaulted. I understand this is a complex issue, but I hope in the next consultation paper that can be dealt with as well. Let me, Mr. Chen Galong and Liang Gah-hung are in line to question next. Thank you, Chairman. I have to thank the deputations for providing valuable input. Through this hearing, the society can have more thorough discourse, no matter what their gender or sexual inclination, they should not be subject to cruel treatment. And we also have to thank the LRC for attending on the second time. This discussion is meaningful regarding the protection of victims. I understand there is a concern that, at the same time, can we maintain a fair trial while protecting the victims? And one of the most important elements of a fair trial is accurate evidence, objective evidence. But when we want to safeguard our victims under the current system, it's insufficient. It affects the quality of evidence and therefore the whole lawsuit is not, does not receive a thorough and accurate treatment. And I think that's not ideal. So we heard from the deputations. So I think Hong Kong society has a consensus that we need to have better protection for victims. And I also welcome the LRC subcommittee undertaking this consultation in the next phase. So I don't think you need to wait. You don't have to be so bureaucratic. You can take, when you prepare your second consultation, you can take on board today's views and compile them together. From human rights perspective, I can, I'm happy to see that we have some consensus across the different political parties. And we need to urge the LRC subcommittee and the DOJ where they need to follow up. And I think our panel on administration of justice and legal services, we need to follow up. So I hope that this panel, under the chairman's leadership, that we can have a pan-political party consensus and urge the government to have some speedy response. We have waited some, four decades for this reform. It's not a question, it's just my views. Next, Mr. Long Gaohong. Thank you, Chairman. Well, first of all, while I hope the LRC subcommittee can disclose how much, what's the scope of their review? When will they conclude their work? Otherwise... Second, you don't need to respond, just take notes would be sufficient. Consentual sex, the age of consensual sex. I think that age limit should be changed. Sex, like human practices, change with time. If you don't update, well, we have people maturing at an earlier age. A lot of people are aware of their bodies and are in control of their bodies even before they're 16. We shouldn't have a rigid stance. Second, I think sex starts with the brain and ends with the behaviour. So for penetration to be the sentencing or element, we have to deal with other issues as well, such as sex torture, perverted behaviour, there's no penetration. They did not conduct penetration, but it's still rape. The mental intention was there. Of course, we can have physical harm and the body can heal. But sex starts in the brain. Otherwise, we wouldn't be so interested in it. So if there was no penetration, if there was assault without penetration, well, we can still have perverts who don't penetrate and still harm their victims. Statutory rape leads to pornography. That is... Movies, videos. These gang rape woman. Is that rape? Or under common law? How do we deal with these? I think these are very serious crimes. In Europe, there's a lot of... There is a lot of human trafficking where women are forced to work, sex workers. Is that rape? Human trafficking? Have you done studies in this area? I'm interested in this. If there is no, if the charge isn't rape or penal penetration. Well, I think these crimes are much more worse than one person inflicting another person, inflicting harm on another person. Will you review this as well? Let's call it sexual offence in the time being. LRC, any response?
Yeah, so I'll try and identify those and talk through. First of all, when will we finish? I don't know. We started in 2006. I think this particular topic that we've dealt with in this paper, after the consultation period finishes in February, we'll have to distill all the feedback that we've had. And I anticipate that we'll be able to give a report to the commission proper in the middle of this year. With regard to the second, to the next stage of our process, which deals with matters such as the protection of the vulnerable, like underage boys, the age of consensual sex, the matter that you referred to, I would imagine that we'd have a consultation paper ready by the end of this year. The matters of things like sex torture and so forth, I share your concern with regard to those matters, but they are already covered, not in the heading of sex torture. But sexual assault, as we have recommended it be implemented, would cover matters such as sexual torture. Finally, with regard to human trafficking, that is already on the statute books. There is an offence there already. It's not within our remit to look at that because it's not regarded as a sexual offence. It's a human trafficking thing outside our remit. If there are any problems there, I think they are more in the field of enforcement as opposed to any deficiency in the legislation.
If the penalty is lower than rape, that's not fair. They are repeatedly being raped. I'll let you, it's now 4:29 and I will extend by 10 minutes. We won't necessarily use up all 10 minutes. I also have some views and I would like, and you can respond in one go to the outstanding questions. First of all, I would thank the LRC. You have taken on board our views. You extended the consultation period by two months and we had today's hearing. And we have deputations who are very sincere, who came out to express their views. Second, we mentioned the DOJ. When will the secretary for DOJ attend our panel? We have already set aside the second quarter of this year. Every year, legislature here will come and report. Third, regarding, these are my views. The India gang rape case, just now, Korn Fook talked about it. It's heartbreaking. Domestic sexual violence is very serious. So I see, we have a very clear message today, that is, we need to protect the victims, witnesses. These are sensitive crimes, it affects their futures. So...
Therefore, in my opinion, be it the legal profession or the courts, we're duty-bound to make improvements. And there is this controversial issue of whether or not we should replace rape by sexual assault by penetration. I personally have reservation over this. The main reason being this. Well, usually, there can be two offences for the prosecution to choose. So if you suddenly replace rape by sexual assault by penetration, I'd like to say that to an ordinary person, rape is a very clear offence. So it's not very appropriate to totally replace it by a new offence. So I'd rather you differentiate clearly between the two. In law, that's easier to be done because members of the public may have misunderstandings. Well, you would like to enhance the protection for the victim, but members of the public may not necessarily feel so. Just now, it's mentioned that in daily living, both males and females may be victims of sexual offences. And nowadays, teenagers are sexually very open-minded. I don't want them to commit an offence unknowingly. So through the media, we should publicise this new concept. We don't want to prosecute or convict more people. We would like to guard against any sexual offences. Well, I think Mr. Long Gaohong's comments are good. He has provided you with some food for thought. Well, some people say that they've offended somebody on the internet and then they're sexually offended on the internet and the victim loses his dignity on the internet. So these victims may feel that they're losing their privacy and sexually assaulted on the internet because they've offended some other parties. That is worthy of our concern. And then today, the deputations and members ask for follow-up. Yes, we can allow you to follow up on these recommendations in phase as well as other issues in phase. Well, sex workers, protection of boys and girls, et cetera, et cetera. I think today's consensus is that you should follow up on those issues as well. Perhaps you may not have sufficient time to respond to all those issues, but I'll let the LRC have the final word. Yes, Mr. Peter Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you've given us even more to think about because we've now got conflicting views on whether rape and sexual assault by penetration should be separate or should remain the same. I know the Law Society have taken a view which is similar to yours. But I mean, this is what the consultation is all about. We have certainly preliminary views. We've gone out to the public and expressed those views. We're extremely grateful for the feedback that we've had and I can assure you that all of those views will be taken into account. Thank you.
What about the other LRC members? Just now, we heard that no matter how laws are reformed, it won't be enough. Education is important. I agree. But the LRC and subcommittees may not be able to do much education. We have to rely on the public. That piece of opinion may have originated from the fact that prejudice in the past might have been based on lack of understanding. For example, just now, there's this concern about whether or not the concept of consent is clear enough. Well, the definition that we are now proposing is based on references to overseas jurisdictions. Well, maybe public, or maybe police officers and members of the public have misunderstanding. We can clarify such misunderstandings by way of education. Should we make reference to the Scotland practice? That is, the presumption of that evidence, the presumption that evidence can be overturned. But if we add in this presumption, it may be counterproductive. We have high court judges and very experienced prosecutors in the DOJ to advise us. Well, in fact, both judges and jurors will understand very clearly the fact that is whether or not consent is given free and voluntarily. If we are to add in a presumption in law, it may even result in more difficulties. There may even be more controversy. And if there's anything wrong in the guidelines, when something is done wrong in terms of prosecution and appeal, may result. So to add in the presumption may not be able to attain the objective of protecting the witness. It may be counterproductive. As regards marital sexual violence, the existing law stipulates very clearly that rape can be committed within marriage when there is no consent. So if we incorporate this concept of consent into the law, then coupled with education, sexual autonomy will be more respected.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've given us a multiple amount of additional thought and issues to be dealt with in our forthcoming meetings. Perhaps I'll just briefly mention two of them. One of them is that the proposed legislation that we are dealing with is to apply across the board. It would apply to sex workers and it would apply to domestic helpers in the event of sexual assault. We have not dealt with the, perhaps the moral side of sex workers, whether prostitution should be legalised, et cetera. We've left that for another body in the future. Equally with stalking, we have not dealt with the privacy aspects of it. But obviously, if any sexual assault or harassment occurred, yes, that would be covered by the legislation. Secondly, regarding witness protection, which has been a recurrent theme, we do have legislation already for vulnerable witnesses, particularly children. Whether or not it can be expedited more in respect of rape victims is a matter that can be taken up. I note that two of our previous papers, one on the common law presumption for boys under 14 and the second paper that we issued regarding the sex offenders register was actually implemented very quickly. So the LRC can, in some circumstances, be dealt with very fast by the legislature. So we've heard what you've said and we will take that back to the Law Reform Commission. Thank you.
So thank you very much for attending today's meeting. The consultation period has been extended to the 28th of February. So if you have any further views, you can still express them to the LRC. Thank you very much.